Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the public board meeting of June 23rd. A reminder, for as an emergency, please have some clear air in the building. And close access to the area of the building. If you can't get out that way, then it's definitely a problem. But you may be able, please do not throw direct advice or personnel. If you want to smoke, it's a non-smoking building, so please take a smoke outside.
Yes, good evening, everybody. First, due to your full of the board meeting minutes of June 19, 2014.
Most to accept this present.
I have just one little title, I think. Imagine these bills, on which they're made by just the key people, who are very much interested.
Any other changes to the list of additions? Most to accept this present. Any changes?
No.
May I?
Hi.
Okay. Just before we continue on, I just spent eight weeks working on one of these packages, tours and things. Yeah, all the rent. And, you know, Scuny, which is on the Atlantic, on the east coast. We went down to the collateral, where my mother's family, went to the village of Terrenone, Terrenone, this bar. And what was, you know, I was speaking to Patty, and so I was going knocking on doors, asking for my relatives. But on the way out of town, there was a little church up on a hill, built about 100 years ago. And my daughter was taking pictures of the church, and said, "If you want to find a church, go ahead and leave and trip over while we're going around." So we went to the top of the hill and we took a picture. The whole church is probably, I think, the size of this, very small, cold, less people than in this village now. And so we're getting ready to leave, and I look up on the side, and there's a listing of families that were found. And what I found interesting about it is that the names had come from this community. My mother was Romeo. And it was Romeos, there were Salomos, there were Oliveris, there were Russos. And there was this whole series of names. It was just sort of neat to see that connection, myself, from here to there. But we went to Sorrento, and it was just, it was a wonderful trip. But that was probably, you know, walking around this little village, the way your parents come from. You'd have the opportunity to find where your parents' family were from. We all have somebody that came from someplace else, which was sort of anything to do with. So that's the story of my trip here.
What was close to the house?
What's that?
What was close to the house?
Oh, that was the other part of the matter, and I kept trying to figure out how to do that. So I went to their village hall at 12 o'clock, and I get them 1:30. They closed down at 12, they opened back at 3.
All four?
Yeah.
Summer hours.
Thank you for my development supply. It was closing.
No groceries on the way home today?
Couple of countries away.
All I have is bills for tonight, everybody. Bills for the period of June 5th to the 23rd. Those $716,635.34. Or this number one, workings comp. US state health insurance, $106,320.8. PSEG for lighting, garage wide, $32,065.02. We have a theater bill for the roof, a small bill for $18,045. And a waste disposal bill, recycling $50,80.02. And that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn, please. Any questions, please. More favor?
Hi. Patrick Pride Ward. You drive around Patchogue Village these days, you see a lot of people fixing up their homes in places, in different neighborhoods around town. And drive around, you see all the beautiful homes being around there. We have a few here, a few homes that are recipients of, well, not the homes recipients, but the people who live in the homes are recipients of Patchogue Pride Ward. We have one here from 16 Monroe Avenue. Oh, I know this house. It was beautiful back then. Stanley and Christine Joseph Puppets, right here. No? Well, is it Patrick Pride Ward?
That's my niece, out there.
Is it really?
Who is he, niece?
Oh.
Do you want to take a picture, or am I in a hurry?
No, not in a hurry. Beautiful home. Nice job.
It used to be Joe Zanes.
Yeah. And this one here is, what, 20 Gilbert Street. What a beautiful home. Anne Marie Drago.
Right here.
Very nice job.
Thank you.
I'm very excited about this. I'm sure I've never heard of this.
Good.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Public chair.
First of hearing this evening. Notice is hereby given on public hearing held on Monday, June 23rd. 2014, 16, 14, Baker Street, Patchogue, North by the appropriate, by Board of Trustees, the appropriate village of Patchogue. To amend section 415 dash 28A of the village code to require the parking space number to be included, pending notice of violation, violations of Article 8, a copy of which proposed by the laws on Friday, the opposite village, but will exempt public hearing any person who may be given the opportunity to.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board trustees. This is, as outlined when we set the public hearing, this is a very simple change. This is occasionally in review of vehicle traffic law, especially upon consultation with the prosecutor. There would be legacies from our previous meters, as we'll recall, as we go towards the modern day meters. The old meters were numbered individually. Now the numbers on the meter are irrelevant, it's the spot that matters. So in this case, this is a change in the language on a notice of violation. And that's the indication that the parking space in which the vehicle is occupying the parking space, is a violation, not the actual number of a parking meter. That's all that's made in that direction.
No, I think it's just, as you said, it's kind of fixing old housekeeping. And it just makes it a little more, right. Any comments on the board? Motion to adjourn, please. Motion. No favor?
Hi.
Say a vote here.
Notice is hereby given on public hearing held on Monday, June 23rd, 2014, 6:00 PM, 14, Baker Street, Patchogue, North by the village board, the appropriate village of Patchogue. To amend section 435 dash 71, Article 11, amendments to the zoning ordinance for map property located at 172 North Ocean Avenue. Petition receives a change of zone from A residence to B residence and office. Adsept public hearing, first interested, if they have the opportunity to.
Okay. This is a rehearing, as all residents have the opportunity to appeal back to this, appeal of decision made on January 2011.
Well, technically, it's a new year.
It's a new year, but basically a rehearing.
Yeah.
I mean, that the board was already.
Well, this is a, well, first, we want to call the applicant up to make their presentation. Again, this is an application that was originally denied in January 2013, 2012, by Board of Trustees, to change the zoning classification of 172 North Ocean Avenue, Patchogue, from A residence to a B residence office district. It is CO'd as a single-family residence. And two-story, single-family dwelling with a frame garage. Applicant requests a change of zone to the B residence and office district.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board trustees, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Tevin Inc. I have a handout for you guys, and I'm just going to pass it around.
Just state your name and address with records on it.
Of course. I'm the attorney for the applicant, James Clark, 57, West Main Street, Suite 220, Battle on New York.
Thank you.
The following statement is in support of this application, to change the designation of the property from Residence A to Residence B. The prior application was denied here, but this was after a favorable determination by the village planning board, granting final site plan here. A copy of that determination is included in this memo, as well as the reasons therefore. Just cutting to the chase, I know that the main issue here is whether this application would constitute spot zoning, because discretion of the board is basically, if you had to tie it, if it is. I'm basically going to go through the reasons why it is not. Basically, spot zoning, as you guys probably already know, is singling out a small parcel of land for use classification, totally different from the surrounding area, for the benefit of the one owner, but at the detriment of the surrounding community. The factors of whether it is spot zoning or not, I'm going to go through one by one. It is our position to grant that this application is not spot zoning. Number one, the rezoning is consistent with a comprehensive plan use plan. Back in November of 2002, the village had commissioned, the village of Patchogue Downtown Business District Study. The plan was to make recommendations that would improve and protect the viability of the existing businesses in the downtown district, and for the enjoyment advantage of village residents, merchants, and visitors. A copy of the relevant provisions of that plan is also included in that memo. One of the key recommendations that I'll draw your attention to, is the encouragement of non-retail uses outside of the core business area, including office, service, and institutional uses. This outside of the core business area singled out two areas. To the south of Main Street, the plan recommended it be utilized for multi-unit housing, which a lot of it has. Areas to the north, and particularly along North Ocean Avenue, the plan recommended to be utilized for office, service, and institutional uses, which is what we're asking for tonight. The study further specified that such changes should be achieved by modifying the zoning code, as we are applying for. And I quote, "The existing zoning code should be amended to encourage office, service, and institutional uses." So now the rezoning of this property has been encouraged, recommended, and would be entirely consistent with the plan previously commissioned by the village. Number two, the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses. The property, 172 North Ocean Avenue, is a corner lot, boarded immediately to the south by B residence properties that are, for the most part, being used as offices or other commercial uses. The main structure that we're discussing tonight is a house that was built in 1925, which the owner intends to maintain in its current form, with all its historical traits. The properties to the north are mostly A residence properties, with the exception of a church and 191 North Ocean Avenue, which is Zoned B Residence. The rezoning of this property straddles the border of the A and the B, and would be exactly compatible with the surrounding uses, which to the south is commercial, and to the north is largely residential. Allowing it to use in this manner maintains the current historical structure, which is compatible with the residents to the north, but avoid office commercial use, which is compatible with the commercial properties to the south. It will provide a smooth transition from the commercial to residential area, while at the same time providing somewhat of a buffer to the residences to the north. The rezoning is the only way to make this happen, because the eight district regulations do not otherwise permit this type of use. Number three, the surrounding properties are not likely to be harmed. Since the applicant acquired the property, June of 2010, it was, and expended substantial sums of money to clean up and restore the property, it has been used for light office and professional use. The main structure has been beautifully restored, historical elements have been maintained. And through these four years, there's little of any indication that the use is any different than the other surrounding properties. Since the applicant acquired and cleaned up the properties, the surrounding properties have benefited, as the applicant has restored and maintained in a pristine condition that which was previously of light in the community. Prior to their acquisition of the property, it was used as single-room occupancy and other lower-end residential uses. While that prior uses of residence was sometimes compatible with the zoning regulations of Residence A, it hardly appeared that way from the physical condition or the element that it attracted, and was either way entirely unbecoming of the preeminent residential zone of the village. The property is in a challenged location, it's on a corner lot. Pure residential use contemplated by the Residence A regulations hasn't been working there for years. Included in that memorandum is a listing history of this property since 1997, which show a pattern of being bought, used, trying to sell, not selling, entering foreclosure, short sale, on three or four separate occasions, and then finally being sold in a fire sale fashion. All during these cycles, the property remained vacant, occupied by squatters, or otherwise blighted and serving as an eyesore and a trouble spot to the community. The proposed use as professional offices is far more compatible with the preeminent residential zone of the village than the previous destructive cycle that the property has endured. The application before the court provides what we believe, and which a lot of neighbors believe, believe it or not, and which history demonstrates is the only way to break this destructive cycle. The surrounding properties will not be harmed, but in fact, it will enhance the neighborhood, and provide a distinctive and historically respectful gateway between a commercial and residential district. Number four, the professional planning staff has recommended the approval of this application. This application has already been vetted by the planning board through multiple sessions, and following those exhaustive sessions, and with the cooperation of the applicant, the planning board has recommended that this be approved. The village planning board memorandum stating the reasons for the positive referral is included in my memorandum. Some noteworthy comments from that memo, and I quote, "This applicant was very accommodating to the directions of the planning board, and we believe the site plan as approved is more than adequate for the use of a parcel as professional office. This parcel is in character with the neighboring parcels, with professional offices being a norm of the village, and this parcel would not be out of character in the zone if the zone was changed." The planning board spent many hours with the applicant, and the applicant has spent considerable investment in redrawn and reworked plans, on behalf of the planning board, to ensure that will provide active parking, as well as ensure neighboring parcels will not be affected by office use at the site. Some other considerations that the board, I'm sure, will consider, is the permanence of the approval. We're asking for a change of zone that does lend itself to some sense of permanence. It's a valid concern. However, this is not the applicant's last stop in getting this approved. She still must go before the zoning board appeals, and board trustee can limit or commission its approval in a way that would maintain some semblance of control over what happens at this property in the future. In fact, in that way, it provides a unique opportunity with respect to this parcel, to specifically tailor your approval as a gateway between the A and B residence districts. The applicant would be willing to accept an approval that was limited, or required covenants, to run with the property, to ensure that the character of the neighborhood is maintained, while allowing the use of the property to move forward to the highest and best use. Then I just have a final word about this community opposition and support that we're somewhat aware of. We're aware that the application is opposed by a small but vocal segment of the community. But the nature of the opposition and the specific reasons for their opposition have largely been addressed. The board should also note that many of the individuals who seemingly signed on with the opposition have also entered later contradictory statements in support of the application, after the applicant invited them to tour the property, answered their questions, and to clear the misinformation that's been going around about the application. In addition, many more residents have refused to sign on with the opposition, and have offered strong written statements in support of this application. To date, the applicant has received over 80 statements in support. Many of these statements are from owners of properties immediately surrounding this property. Nearly all of them are village residential business owners. These statements are going to be provided to the board separately, and I encourage you to look at them, and to see who has written them, and to see to the extent people who have signed on with the opposition are now supporting this application. Just to quote a few noteworthy statements of support in this application, we have one from Matthew Wells from 70th North Ocean Avenue, saying, "I fully support the proposed change of zone from A residence to B residence office." We have Christopher Kokovianko from 81 Cedar Avenue, prominent business owner in the village. "North Ocean Avenue is the main gateway to the village, and beautiful homes that line the street make one of the nicest streets in the village. I don't believe the proposed use would change this character, since there are a number of buildings to the north and south of 172 North Ocean Avenue, that were originally built as homes, but are now being used as offices." Another statement by Barbara Low of 61 Rose Avenue, former village justice. "The owners have kept and planned to keep the charm of the residential look of the house, while providing another business the opportunity to contribute to the village. Since North Ocean Avenue is the main thoroughfare to the heart of the village, its combination of homes and businesses that look like homes presents as friendly to professionals for which can work and live in the village. This zoning change is a step in attracting more of them, thereby increasing the tax base." And I just mentioned these statements, just to demonstrate that the opposition to this application is far from universal. And in fact, the bulk of the opposition rests outside the affected area. On the other hand, the support of this application is deep rooted, and immediately surrounding properties, but also stretches widely among broad swaths of the community. We also have a letter, which is included in the package now, provided the board, from immediately neighboring properties, all of which are strongly in support of this. And in closing, the board has been told, in the way that it's sought to turn around the village, excuse me, the board has been bold, in the way it's been sought to turn around the village and its downtown and commercial district. The fruits of those actions are evident in the way the village has and continues to rebound in a relatively short period of time. At the same time, longtime residents have sought to temper these bold moves with an eye toward character and history of the village, and the balancing of these interests by the board has been largely successful. The approval of this application doesn't equal the bold moves already made by the board, but is more of a natural and obvious progression of the previously enacted vision for the village, and the applicant is a willing partner in that vision. The rezoning of the property is the only viable solution to move this corner of the village forward, and I encourage the board to consider the opportunity before it, to shape the future and enhance the community for generations to come, rather than allow this property to fall back into this destructive cycle of the past. With that, I'll go. The letters, the regulations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the members of the trustees would have.
Can you mention 191 Ocean Avenue?
Residential beach. It's kind of an island in a sea of Residence A, not the hotel room that's spot zoning tonight.
Mr. Mayor, you're going to want to go about the public, what happened, the procedure not being malicious, but just a couple of questions. Is there any residential component to the property now?
Uh, no, there's none.
So the owner doesn't live at the property now?
No.
The owner's a corporation?
Correct.
Under the principles of the two?
Correct.
Now, is the corporation operating the business there now?
The corporation holding the property, it's just holding the property, but there is affiliated business operating at the property now, from time to time, yes.
And the principles of the owner and the business occupying the property are the same?
They are the same, correct.
Mr. Clark, thank you very much for your presentation. Could you tell us, or tell the board, what is different in this application today that's different from the January 23rd, 2012 decision and the original presentation in November 2011?
That original presentation, I don't think contained any of the reasoning addressing the reason why it was denied, which I believe was for spot zoning, that it was suspected that would be a spot zoning issue, and didn't address the opposition frankly, because you didn't think there was any opposition. The planning board, it sailed through. So here, we're trying to address the concerns that have been raised about the property, and to let the board know that this is a good thing, not a bad thing, and the reason why.
Further definitely from the use, though, has anything changed from 2011 to today?
No.
We'll give you a chance to rebuttal as well.
Before the public comes up, we've received, I think, six, six letters, mainly in opposition. What I like, what we're sealed to do is just read the names to the record, and those letters will be placed into the record as, as written, as will these become part of the record also.
We have one from Sandra Mastriani at 185 North Ocean Avenue. Alicia Amaha Hall, doesn't stay here, in North Ocean, excuse me. Sandra Amaha, same address, one lady. Maureen Campanelli, 191 North Ocean. Jennifer Rico, 219 North Ocean Avenue. And Daniel Campanelli, 191 North Ocean Avenue.
All of those will be placed into the record, as written. What I'd ask tonight, there are people here that would like to speak, what I would like you to do, those, if your comments are the same as the person making comments before you, you don't need to repeat it over and over again, they will go into the record as presented. So kind of listen to the person before you, otherwise, you could be sitting here for a portion of the night, seeing the same thing over and over again. So if you have a spokesman for the group, or a couple of spokesmen, let's let that be the process that we follow.
Bless you.
And when you talk, just give your name and your address.
My name is Maureen Campanelli. I live at 191 North Ocean Avenue, just as mentioned. For those of you that are unfamiliar with my home, it's the lodge green Victorian with the lodge hanging plants. It was formerly owned by the Ruland family, so a bit of a squirt. And then Dr. Lab had purchased the home sometime over the years. When I purchased my home, it had been some sort of strange zoning that they're referring to, where it was given a business type of listing for Dr. Lab, and he had his practice there. But like we were talking about, these zonings remain permanent with the residents, which quite frankly, I don't really agree with. And when I bought the home, we were actually able to go into the back door and head upstairs without ever entering any of the other chopped up rooms. There's a lot of sub walls. There's a lot of sub walls. This house was obviously being rented out. If the Board had come to me and said, "You're going to purchase this house, Miss Campanelli, we'd like it to remain residence," I would have complied with that. I don't have a problem with bringing the home back. I paid a lot of money, as did Ms. Montana, to bring her home to where she did, so did I. And now it's a beauty of the village, I must say, so am I. But in that point, I'd like to go back to that two thousand and two document that the attorneys spoke about. I read it to be a little bit different. I saw in that document that they were saying that the Board should go into the village and find some of these miszoned homes and bring them back to residents, and leave the core business down on Main Street, and encourage people to buy these units and use them as single dwellings for them to be able to walk into downtown, we use our businesses down there, and we have a clear divider between what is business and what is residential. So I just wanted to bring that up. As far as being in the community, I'm sure that you recognize me? I've been, I was the president of the South Ocean Avenue PTA right next door, those loans my kids attended there. My husband, Daniel, is an active member of the Patch Up Fire Department, so we're residents here, we're not transients, and we do give back to our community. We are both opposed to the change, as are our children, who, one of my children works in the village. So we not only live here, we also work here. I would like to also note that I am within the notification zone, that we're supposed to get a certified letter from the applicant. I did receive my letter, however, the village code states it's supposed to be within ten days. My letter is postmarked on the sixteenth, they hit my house on the seventeenth, gave me four business days to pick up the letter. I had to pick it up on Friday when we were doing some construction on Main Street and Main Street was closed. This was a hardship for me to go get this, and I'm concerned about other residents that also received late notifications, so I would like that marked for the record, thank you. And basically, I had written you a letter right when I saw it in the paper, and I said, you know, I'm talking to my neighbors, and they're all saying their sentiments haven't changed. We have porch crawl parties, we all get together, my yard, my neighbor's yard, and the parking yard, we don't even have a fence because we all hang out together. This is a residential community, don't be confused, we are not business people, we are residents, we enjoy our residents. So I started talking to some of the other neighbors, many were not even aware that this was up again for discussion. Many have children, we have new neighbors with kids, we have people facing surgery, people were telling me, "I can't go to that, I gotta go to work." I gotta have, I gotta have somebody watch my kids to go down and talk about this, but they were all emphatic that they do not want this changed. They do not want this changed. So I'd like to present to the Board tonight, a little, you know, I put together this little petition, I walked around, I started talking to my neighbors, which quite frankly, is a little bit out of character for me to walk up to somebody's door I don't really know and not on, but I was very surprised. At first, again, I was very surprised to see all the new families, we have a lot of new families on North Ocean, we have babies, we have kids at the bus stops, I'd like you to just pass by. By the way, the property in question is one of our children's bus stop. I would not appreciate having a business with a parking lot with cars coming and going, but that's my own personal. So I walked around and I talked to the neighbors. The number of households that I have on my site, oh, and let me explain my scope. There's nobody here that's outside the village. In fact, I only wanted people on my block and the neighboring blocks at this effect, the people that are going to go out and pick up their newspaper in the morning and have to look at signage on the front lawn of the corner house. These are the people I targeted. There are some people that joined in because they said, "Hey, wait a minute, Maureen, we drive down your block, we want it to look the way it looks today." And I had, I had forty-eight households that we spoke to, I have seventy signatures on my petition that are opposed to the change. Of the forty-seven households, let's forget about signatures, because I'm not going to bore you with everybody's name, twenty-three of the residents live on North Ocean Avenue from Thorn to Lakewood. Twenty-three. That's a lot of people. I have all their signatures, I have a little pie chart for you to show you that most of them are on North Ocean, and then we have some people, Thorn Avenue was the next big one that we saw, nine residents, including the next door neighbor to this resident, to One Seventy-two, because it's on a corner lot, that next house there, he doesn't want it, and he's a brand-new resident, he just bought in two thousand thirteen. So I'll let you have my petition so you can take a look at it. Let me see. Again, now I want to talk about this residence. Although we denied this to be a business, it continues to operate, and not only does it operate, it has expanded. There is now a new company there, it's called Primerica, okay? This is an investment company that was formerly owned by Citigroup. It is traded, it is a publicly traded company. We're talking about bringing like the McDonald's of investments onto North Ocean Avenue. I don't think I want that, and I don't think the residents are going to appreciate it. When I did some background searching on this, I found that the primary business person there's name is not any of your applicants, it's a woman named Diane Robinson, and she held licensing to be a securities broker with FINRA, which is the regulatory agency for investments. And if you look at her license, her business address is listed as One Seventy-two North Ocean Avenue, Patch Up New York. Now, as far as I'm concerned, that's supposed to be a residence, it's not supposed to be an investment business there. And we also already have one in Patch Up, at Primerica, so there's really no need for this. Also, she holds what's called a Series Twenty-four licensing. In the securities industry, a Series Twenty-four licensed holder is allowed to supervise other people. That means that she can bring a sales force in there, have people there, seminars, a whole sales force, and these people call calling people for investments day and night. Not really what that application that I just heard, where there's just this one little business. We're talking about a major corporation, with major lawyers coming in here, he's telling me we have a problem, we're not dealing with the amount of popular organization here, this is a publicly traded company on my corner. I'm just really not interested. And back to that study, again, the villager Patch Up Downtown study, once again, I read it as well, and I'd like to refer to certain pages on it, that I think said, maybe I'm not a lawyer, but in my opinion, pages three fifty-four and fifty-five refer to bringing the village back to having these Victorians as residents, and not these hodgepodge businesses with signage in front of them. We are the gateway to the village, so many people tell us that. You make your block look beautiful, it's what our residents see as they come into the village, it's what people that shop come and see into our village, and it's where we live. So the people that I hold are the people that live on the block. And as far as I'm concerned, when you have twenty-three residents on one block saying, "We don't want this," I think it should be something that the village takes a look at and says, "You know what, we're going to support them." And again, if the village would like to come and rescind my, whatever this zoning thing is, I probably would save a dollar or two on taxes, because I don't even understand why I have it, and I don't think it was good, I don't think it was a passports decision, I think it was a mistake back then, and I think it's a mistake today to change anything.
When did you buy the house?
I bought the house in two thousand and one.
Yeah.
That's fine. I mean, we have no, we have no intention of, you know, opening a business or anything, it's our family's home.
Can I see that? Please.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. I may be good to say, I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Dave Garm, One eighty-five North Ocean Avenue.
I'm sorry, Dave, can you spell it?
Sure, it's spelled G-A-R-K-M-B-O-N. I moved to Patch Up in nineteen eighty-four, so we've been here thirty years, and without any exaggeration, I can tell you that my house was the worst house on the block. It was refrigerators on the porch, bushes up in the ceiling. And we took the house, and actually we tried to make it, give you the integrity of the house, it's a lot of love, a lot of cost that goes into it. Friends of mine who I know who passed on my house, were very bright guys, who lived on that street, it's a good street, a little honest, they always come, like, what a great looking neighborhood. Because we had people pull our house for the first time, the first thing they wanted to do was see the house, see what you did, "This looks great." We've got beautiful pictures out here in the hallway, of beautiful old homes. We have a neighbor, it's a community on Halloween, we dress up for the kids who come to our house, all the doors are open, I mean, it's a, it's a warm, inviting community. We, I heard you mention that, it's the gateway to Patch Up, and it really is. It's a charming community, and it's a charming road, and I agree with that. This is a normal Rockwell scene, and I think that if you lose it to commercials, I think you're not ahead.
Hi, how are you? Felisa Mahaval, one nineteen North Ocean Avenue, you have my letters. Okay, I'd like to address, um...
The young man is?
This is Alex.
Oh, Alex.
Hi. You've met Alex before, he's voice actor. So I'm called Master Pack, One Seventy-seven, Girl Scout troop leader, troop seven sixty-seven, nineteen ninety. I also want a license in home daycare, it's a residential daycare out of my home, to keep us children in the home. I'm opposed, obviously you have my letters, to this. The spaces grown occupied by Seven Incorporated, Half an Hour Incorporated, Primerica, Bob Bennett, Susan Montana, Diane Montana, that's not a lot of people, or it's going to be a low, a low-traffic location. My rezoning is unnecessary in my opinion, because there's plenty of space available south of Thorn Street. I sent you the compilation, which you can also send along to help you. So more business space is not necessary, because there's so much readily available. There's also plenty on Oak Street, One Twelve, Main Street, and I'm sure New Village is gorgeous, there must be stuff there. Alex, can you show my map? So this is the map of our neighborhood, this being north, this is North Ocean Avenue, Lakewood, Cedar Road, and Thorn. Here's One Seventy-two in the red, these are the business districts below One Seventy-two. Everything in highlighted yellow is residential, and you can see that there's a hundred percent of the homes north of Thorn are residential, and a hundred percent of the homes on Thorn Avenue are residential. Six of Mrs. House's houses have children that they're raising, we're raising our families here. Couple of next older women is pregnant, I can say now, it's overdue. I have four, Cross Street has one, Down the Block has three. This is not an appropriate location to have in one of this place in the middle of where the children are, close to it. So there are no less than five bus stops in our area. Two located here, one Thorn Street and North Ocean, one at One Seventy-two and one at One Seventy-one. Don't ask why, talk to them, but there are two separate bus routes and two separate bus stops. There's also one here, one here, one here, and one there. So that's a lot of children traffic that they obviously need to keep up with the children. The website says, "It's our mission to make this place a nice place to live, work, and raise a family." I'm sure that you guys are aware of that, and that you'll look to that when making your decision. Thank you. Have a good session. Thank you.
You knew I could. But I'm not playing that role this evening, I'm Glenda, the Witch tonight. Mary Casson at one ninety-three North Ocean Avenue, Patch Up New York, and you all will have to come see the Dax, the Wizard of Oz, I'm the Witch of the West, Ovations, Wizard of Oz this summer, it should be a very interesting summer. I feel like we're moving around, okay? I think I'm the person that has been up here over and over and over again. She bought the house in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we started this journey, and now it'll be two thousand and fourteen. She bought the property knowing it was residential. When I did a little bit of researching as to why you would buy a residential property and then intend to convert it, the property, and I just hope, within the last five years, on the North Ocean Avenue con, area, the commercial, the business zone properties are approximately forty percent higher in cost. So that's why you're resident, to achieve your house, it's easier to do it that way. We'll make the change afterwards. It's easier to get financing and mortgaging if you're financing a residential, not a commercial. Ms. Montana's a very smart woman, she did a very smart business request, she will make a lot of money when she sells this home. Now, a couple of things, I said to myself in two thousand and eleven, were denied in two thousand and twelve, as Mr. even asked, what's changed? Well, what's changed is the scope of the business has changed. Everything that Ms. Montana stood up here and said she wouldn't do, she's done. She was never, and looking at your records of your meetings, because I would be more than willing to poke you or stake you, she would not be renting out. As Mrs. Campanelli spoke, we have Primerica. We've got a sign that goes up and down, if Primerica's there, the sign goes up, if Primerica's not there, the sign goes down. She now runs, when she originally asked for permission, she was running a medical insurance consulting business. She's now running training seminars out of that site, and if you look at her website, you will see, when you look at it, that there currently, she is offering seven different training seminars that are being run out of that office building, in addition to her daily business dealings, that's seven trainings. She also, over the course of time, has run at least two, how will you pay for your child's education seminars at this same business. All of these were done after she was denied. She's continued to run this business after she was denied. She just kept right on going, and I truly believe that if I had not been consistently up here asking and asking and asking, she would continue to do it. We, we've called the building department, the building department, Carol Gilley always tell us that it's up to the, to the village attorney, it's in litigation, she, they won't let us add them in, various other things. This has not been something that the residents have walked away from, we have been at this, we've been constantly asking about it. And I think the, the one that's the most telling is, and I was up here, I had this discussion, October two thousand and twelve, when I brought you the advertisement, that she was showing it as an event space. Okay, did we hear about that in, in their presentation? We didn't hear about an event space. She sent a letter out to the business community, basically, when she went out, she was talking about and explaining what a good steward she was at the property. But I find, look at that house, compare that to all of us that live in our homes, look at her landscaping versus our landscaping, that's not a good steward of the property, property has three bushes, it's not landscaped, she, it, it doesn't look like a home, so if that's the character on which she's going to keep that home, I don't want that in my neighborhood, I want it to look like a home, it doesn't look like a home currently. She thought he did a good favor, Ms. Montana approached one of the mothers at the bus stop recently, and was complaining about cars that were parked on the street, whose cars are these? I'm going to have them towed. And I'm in the eye of, considering that every time she has business appointments, they all park on that same street. It happened to be one of our neighbors who was, they're doing repainting in their backyard, so that that's where their cars were parked. Did she not land doors, did she ask, "I'm going to have them towed"? Someone checked this public street, she can't have them towed. But that was the kind of attitude that she has towards us. When she went out and approached her neighbors, she neglected to mention, yes, correctly, by code, she needs to put a parking lot in there, it's spaces according to the planning board, that needs to be buffered by a green zone, that she's not a, that the planning board says that she has to do, but she didn't mention that to people. So it's very easy to say, "Oh, look at me, I'm being picked on," but let's talk about the circumstances there. Last but not least, before I leave, what I do want to ask is, is one point, is when we had this discussion about the planning board, it was our opinion, we came up at the last meeting, that was a work session that she appeared at the planning board, that...
Once again, the signs on the house did not go up to Sunday afternoon.
Hello, I'm Lisa Albinowski. I'm a licensed real estate associate program with Grilt to Connect. I sold A-L-D-I-N-O-W-S-K-I. It's my husband's fault. I sold Miss Montana's home. I know Sue Montana best in years. As the Chair of the Suffolk County Women's Business Enterprise Coalition, it's an organization that's been under the guise of the county for about 25 years, and we recently broke away, but we still have our meetings and our board meetings there. And I met Sue Montana there about 10 years ago. And when we went to the property, her intention was to house her own business so that she can have some peace and quiet and be in a beautiful area where she grew up to the community, to have other networking meetings with people who have businesses down here on the street and have her lunch and breakfast in the local community. When we went to this house, this was a short sale. The house was in no way kept like all of these people are saying that the house should be in, in the state of right of ownership. It was a mess. There were doors and rooms and locks in every single space. There were a lot of illegal things going on, and the house was a mess. The property was a mess. By the time Sue Montana actually bought the property, the ceiling was caved in from the room above. This woman has made this property a phenomenal renovation and kept it in line with the historical sense of the community. And as a business person myself, there aren't people coming and going all day. There were people coming and going from that property when she bought that house. And I understand that everybody wants quiet enjoyment and place to live and raise their family. I've sold the home across the street, and the problem with the property where Sue Montana has her business now, or has her title, if you will, it is a corner property with no backyard. People do not buy family residences with no backyard. Her property is on the corner. There's totally, it's a very hard sell for a family to come into this community and buy a property like that. It's a very, it's an unattractive property to a resident, and I just want to tell you that I know her personally, and I will stand up for her. She is a professional person, and she is somebody who is really trying to make herself within line to the community, and she's done that by restoring the property in such a condition that is in line with the properties that are on North Ocean Avenue. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Richard Kemp, 68 Jennings Avenue. Mr. Mayor, I am fully familiar with this house, and I can give you a bit of history because I am a life resident from one block away. This was not mentioned by the attorney, but I can tell you that this house was owned by Mr. Mackey during the late 1950s. He was an accountant and a noted public, and he publicly displayed a shingle on a post in his front yard for quite a few years that I can remember as a small child. So, he had an active business that was in conformity with the neighborhood. There was no adverse effect. There were no traffic problems, no parking problems, no sanitation pickup problems, and no noise problems when Mr. Mackey was there. After he passed away, or moved away, or whatever, that house did go through quite a bit of changes that I'm familiar with. There were four closures and people moving in and out, and so on and so forth, and there was a lot of problems then. So, that is true, that the attorney stated. Now, I have some questions. If this change of zone is granted, what effect will this have on the tax bill?
Not a substantial change at all.
Not a substantial. How about the sanitation pickup?
Few residents.
So, that will be done by Patch of Village?
We will be charged to that.
Okay. All right. As far as the property, from my observations, it has been fairly maintained. I would agree that it could use a few more plants and flowers and something like that. It appears to be a quiet operation, and I believe that this would fit in with the area. The house directly on the other side, the south side, is a dental office, and most of the area south of Thorn Street is, I believe, RPO. I don't know if that's B zoning or what it is.
Few residents.
Okay. There is one house at 120 North Ocean Avenue that is not, it's a residential structure.
North Thorn Street?
No, south.
South.
South. So, and as far as north of Thorn Street, on North Ocean Avenue, there was another house, and I believe a lawyer, I believe his name may have been Mr. Laval, maybe, but he was given a change of zone.
Denied.
He was denied, okay. All right. But from what I'm hearing, I do believe that this would be something that would fit in with the surrounding neighborhood there. From what has been said, this is something that sounds doable within reason. I mean, the whole purpose of zoning is to separate residents from business and industrial and to make things coexist, and I believe with this type of operation, I have seen no parking problems, nothing like that. What I will say, I believe it was the dental office on the south side, there was a time when there was a commercial garbage crew coming through at like 5:00 in the morning and making all kinds of noise. It was a terrible... But Patch of Village, when their trucks go around, they all pick it up. So, I think it's a better use for this house. You know, after Mr. Mackey left, there was a lot of problems there. So, I think that this is something that is within reason. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Doing this on the whim, so I'm going to be very brief, somewhat unexpected. My name is Zabala, 173 North Ocean Avenue. Z-A-B-L-A. Sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm one of those, I guess without a better term, I don't quote anyone, but I'm one of those weirdos that lives in a house with no backyard, although my neighbors that also don't have a backyard, who aren't here because they only speak Spanish, but they are family. I think it fired me up to come here tonight in addition to the other unethical things that were going on business-wise prior to being approved by you. I'm a sergeant in the opening, and it's hard to turn that off when I'm not at work. So, maybe I am somewhat of the couple on the block. But I was taking a nap on Saturday afternoon when my mother alerted to me, alerted me to a man who had come up onto the property and removed the sign that all of us residents have concerning the historical preservation of our community. I, even though I was half asleep, I jumped up, put on sneakers, and confronted him, to which he pretended to be on a cell phone, and he ignored me as he ripped up my neighbor's sign and the sign next to their property. I was a bit of a bulldog, and I continued to follow him and said some words that I won't repeat today. But after he took the sign from my other neighbor, who more even had to wrestle it away from him, I then, he then threatened to punch, well, he said, quote, "What do you want me to do, punch you in the fucking face?" So, I then continued to follow him until he ran it around the block, and I had the support of the other females in my neighborhood who watched what had happened and appreciated that I was sticking up for what was going on since he was trespassing, harassing us, stealing. I don't go for that. We're a community. This is the best neighborhood that I've ever lived in, and like your representative says, without a sense of caring, there can be no sense of community. And I just want to say that this is the best neighborhood that I've ever lived in.
Do you have a certain identity in person?
I made a police report, and they're looking for him. I'll write up the affidavit if they do find him. He ran pretty quick, though.
Captain, 100 Oakland, I'll be waiting for you. I would just like to read a letter that I had written in this cell submitted to the board. As a former member of the Architectural Review Board, I take to heart the historical and aesthetic work on the Village of Patch, along with championing its progression. My family and I have a history with the Village, from all four of the kids, school shopping and mid-island, to saving my babysitting money to buy art supplies at Patch's. We've seen and supported the changes that have been made, as well as continuing to support businesses, and have many friends that currently reside in the Village. I too am also a resident. As it is in my opinion, that changing the zoning from A to B at the location of 172 to North Ocean Avenue would not have a negative effect on the character that is, that the Village of Patch has. The property is a corner lot and is located adjacent, directly adjacent to the existing border of Zone B. I have been very familiar with the property at 172 North Ocean Avenue, and remember driving down that street in years past, and I have to comment on the improvement that the current owner has made to the overall looking of the home and property. In closing, I fully support the closed zoning change from A to B at 172 North Ocean Avenue in the Village of Patch. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Can we have the papers?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board Members. Ivan Frank, 85 Jennings Avenue. Our property is diagonal, don't need applicant's property, and we have owned our home for over 50 years. And I have seen a lot of changes in the area, and Thorn Street has traditionally been, in many years in the, I shouldn't say traditionally, that's been a dividing line, and I think that it should remain that dividing line. I know there are a lot of definitions of spot zoning. I look at this as being spot zoning. I think it's step one in making even more changes in having businesses. If you stand on the corner from about 172 and look to the south, what do you see? A lot of signs, a lot of business. Turn and look the other way toward the residential area. I think it's a far better scene. And I think one of the things that I don't like about this, which I call it spot zoning, I know there are a lot of different definitions of spot zoning. I think it sets a precedent. Let's just say that it can't be done, and an applicant can't apply on Jennings Avenue, next door to me, Jane, or for that matter, any property on any A residential street in the Village. I don't think this is a good idea to be approaching the neighborhood nor the community. Thank you.
Assistant, 185 North Ocean Avenue. I have a different approach to all of this. Miss Montana is 67 years old. She has stated that she's put money into the house that she doesn't think she can recoup because no one wants to live in a house without a backyard, even though her neighbors, of course, is sure you all live with no backyards. If she makes this commercial, she can flip it and make 40% more, as Mary had said, because commercial property is possible. Both corner properties we hold are vacant, but have been for quite a while. To make this now another commercial property takes away from their renting their properties. I'm surprised none of them are here complaining. But I don't trust her. She doesn't do what she says she's going to do. At 67, how long should I run the business before she decides she doesn't want it anymore? Who should I put in there?
That's...
You know, it's, it worries us, the future, not just the immediate, both what is going to happen in the future. You know, is it going to be marijuana then next? I don't know. There's a church too goes down. What kind of business can she run there? And if she flips it, who's going to go there? You know, who's the next tenant? That may be worse. Thank you.
My name is Marlene Minto. I live at 119 North Ocean Avenue. I am opposed to having a commercial business on the corner. I'm just, and I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has repeated regarding what we do not have that business now, but I would like to know from 2011, it was deemed illegal. How many times can she appeal? How many times yet again do I have to come down here and voice the same opinion? Nothing has changed. And I'm voicing the same opinion I've been doing by memory. What has changed? How many appeals is she entitled to? How many times do I have to come down here and fight for something that was ruled, and everyone was, it's illegal? Somebody want to turn it?
Well, you know, it's a unique situation to have a rehearing on a property application. There is no legal prohibition as to how many times. However, there is a practical limitation to that. There is no, the code doesn't state, State Village law doesn't state how many times they can do it because, as we all know, property continues for centuries, forever. And I think your point is, you know, it's been determined when will we ever entertain it again? That's the question.
Okay, so she can come back. It's legal that that property has been deemed illegal. She can come back?
No, I would probably say the chance of that happening can be very slim. However, that being said, none of us ever thought this reason to go out of business, and we'd have to rezone that property. So, my other point is why state village code and why the village code itself doesn't state a maximum number of how many times they can have it? It's a practical limitation, it's actually not a legal limitation. I oppose to having a commercial business on the corner. I'm just, and I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has repeated regarding what you do not have that business in it. But I would like to know, in 2011, it was deemed illegal. How many times can she appeal? How many times yet again do I have to come down here and voice the same opinion? Nothing has changed. And I'm voicing the same opinion I've been doing, remembering. What has changed? How many appeals is she entitled to? How many times do I have to come down here and fight for something that was ruled? And the ruling was, it's illegal. Is somebody interested?
Well, you know, it's a unique situation to have a rehearing on a property application. There is no legal prohibition as to how many times. However, there is a practical limitation to that. There is no, the code doesn't state, State Village Law doesn't state how many times they can do it, because as we all know, property continues for centuries, forever. And I think your point is, you know, it's been determined...
Illegal.
When will we ever entertain it again? That's the question.
Okay, so she can come back and believe that that property has been deemed illegal. She can come back?
No, I would probably say the chance of that happening can be very slim. However, that being said, none of us ever thought this reason we'd go out of business and we'd have to rezone that property. So sure, my other point is why State Village Code and why the Village Code itself doesn't state a maximum number of how many times they can have it? It's a practical limitation, it's actually not a legal limitation.
Okay, but you know what, on this one, what this business on the corner, she went right across the street, gave her many different options of purchasing businesses that were deemed business, a business area, and chose not to. She'd fly under the radar, she thought they were asleep, she did not care what she thought. She has no ties to this area, and it just irks me that those signs go up and down. Okay? And I'm very concerned she thinks that she got to have a bargain, so she turned a few bucks more into it to sell it, make a profit. I would love to see this turned down. Thank you.
Neil Cacher, 193 North Ocean Avenue. I've been a longtime resident of the Patchel area. I grew up one block outside of the Village. But I always ride my bike whenever I was going to St. Francis to sales school, and serving in some of the mass church and the library, always been down in North Ocean Avenue. And I was always impressed with all those big houses there, and I was thinking to myself, wow, that must be where the important people live. Only along this house, no, I know the important is not what goes back. My question, though, is, if this was ruled an illegal operation, why was it allowed to continue from 2011 to 2014?
It was an law enforcement question, and I can certainly put that burden on the village with regard to its investigative techniques and what was able to prove what wasn't, in consultation with the village prosecutor. But it resulted in no tickets being given in that time period.
So what's the solution? I mean, how will this time period continue?
Well, I mean, you know, there were certain evidence elicited tonight, which is helpful, and I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Bless you.
Hi. Catherine, 178 North Ocean Avenue. I've been the owner of my property for twenty-one years, and my property borders to the north of Susan's property. Susan's requesting to have her zoning changed. And I met with Susan to discuss her plans for the property. I looked at her drawings, architectural plans that were made to the house, and we discussed the parking situation and how it would affect the property. And at this time, I fully support Susan's plan for rezoning. I've lived up to the house for, it was vacant for fifteen years. It was an I-SO, it was a nice, I took the neighborhood and to myself. I was forced to cut whatever grass I could. I usually cut the piece that bordered my piece of property. I called real estate agents as soon as the signs went up and harassed them, to no avail to have them help, you know, the property meeting. I had to take time off from work to come down to the village to beg to have the grass cut multiple times. That has not happened since Susan moved up. Okay, when Susan can't cut the grass, my son cuts the grass. And we've been attempting to maintain the property and try to maintain it so that it's part of the neighborhood. I understand that there's concern in the neighborhood about the change in zoning, and I have a concern also, but I did read her, the requirements for the property, and I understand the types of businesses that are allowed to operate in the house. My concern the first time was that a deli would open or a pizza parlor, and I understand that that's not a possibility. So I'm happy with that. My concern, if the zoning doesn't occur, that she's going to be forced to sell property because there is no yard. And I live next to the house. It's an extremely dangerous piece of property as far as having children out on the lawn. There is no backyard. Anybody who buys that house and has children, their children are going to be playing in the front of the house or on the side. There have been multiple car accidents. There's a stop sign on their corner. Five out of ten cars miss the stop sign, they go right through. And you can sit out there and watch it on a daily basis and count that. Okay, and small children are an issue. My child was never allowed to play out front, and I had the option of putting him in my yard. Whoever lived in that house with a family is not going to have that option. It's not as being, it's a house that's in the center of the street where you don't have a corner property. She's got traffic from both corners there, and it is an issue. So I do hope that you guys look at the ideas that she has. I'm afraid that if the zoning is not passed, she's going to have to sell the house, and I'm afraid what's going to happen to the property? Who's going to purchase it? There have been people who are interested in purchasing the property to make it a rooming house. It's designed to set up, you know, the way it was set up originally when she bought the property was all tiny little rooms, and they could easily be set up again to do that. And it's my concern that that's what's going to happen in the future, because I don't know who would purchase the house. It was vacant for fifteen years. If it was such a wonderful piece of property, it wouldn't have been vacant for fifteen years. And Susan was very nice to be able to buy the property, and she's put a lot of money into it to fix it up, to get it to a point where my neighbors are not happy with the exterior of it. Well, look at it a few years ago and see what it looked like then. I think it's come a long way. Yes, it does need further work, and I'm sure that she will work on that as, you know, time for buses. So I do hope that, you know, you consider that. I did write a letter to Susan, and she did present it to you with my support. Thank you for your time.
I don't envy your position here tonight, but I really, I'm not going to take much more of your time. If you have any questions or anything, a lot of what we heard is, there's a lot of untruths. So maybe I'm not going to go tit for tat. If there's anything that stood out to you guys that you'd like me to address on behalf of the applicant, I'm happy to do it. You know, she's an active member of the community. She's a small business owner. She's putting her own dollars into the community. This should be encouraged. This property's been through real estate booms and busts, and it's been, from all sounds, it's been a nightmare. We got an opportunity to turn it around. She's a willing partner. She's all ears. To talk to anyone on the planning board will tell you that. And she's willing to make it work. So I encourage you to seize on the opportunity and grant the application.
Can you, one of the questions that I raised was the occupancy by a non-owner-affiliated business, America, could you confirm that?
Basically, there's a friend of Susan Montana that doesn't even pay rent, doesn't have much of an operating business at all. Mostly she's on, you know, she's very financially hot up, and she lets her work in a room from time to time. This is not a corporate conglomerate moving into the village or anything like that. She's not renting space out to anyone. I can say that emphatically right now.
If I may, is the location registered with the vendor?
Is the location registered?
With address?
I don't know, but I'll look into that, and I'll get you a definitive answer on that.
A comment was made about, is could it be a deli or some other business? What businesses, if this zoning was changed, what businesses could go into that space?
Any principal and accessory use permitted in the residence district, which allows one-family dwellings, garages, all kinds of accessory uses, and then only offices and professional buildings when authorized by the ZBA.
So a deli could go in?
It could be an office or a professional building, surveyors, doctors, lawyers, financial appliances.
Would it have, or even have residents as part of it?
No.
So it could be a hundred percent?
Correct. It's all like, that's the difference, that's the difference between RPO and be residents. RPO is a requirement for a residential component of the principal use. This is be residents, which permits, which again, permits a residence, permits a house to be maintained, in a main residence district, but then it also allows office and professional building without any occupancy required by you.
What about two-family? Is it a single-family house?
It is, it's a single... Right. Two-family is out of the question here, because it is, CEO is a single-family.
Okay, so if it stays the same, it's not going to turn to a rooming house or a one-family house?
That's an enforcement question.
If I could just add to that, the key term there is when authorized by the ZBA for the business uses, there's another approval process that's got to happen. And if some business desires to come into this location after Miss Montana, that's objectionable, the ZBA has got the ability to say, no, it just stays residence, and if there's enough public outcry, that'll matter, I'm sure.
The zoning goes with the property, right? So if Miss Montana sells the property someday, some of the business can open?
Correct, we can grab her as an office.
I think Prop America's here, if you want to ask.
Let's just, let's just ask her what her, what her business is registered.
Hold on a second, please.
Sorry.
I'd like to speak a little to Mr. Mayor about this. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. This is something we have been listening to for quite a while, both sides of the aisle. We look at it as some reasons here for, you know, with comments particularly from the people in the audience here, and our own thoughts. Myself feel that the business is incompatible with the surrounding area, surrounding uses. It's got a parking lot, it's got restricted on-street parking, it's a business in residential area. Thorn Street is a clear line of, it's demarcation, clear line of demarcation. You have to the south, you have business; in the north, you have residential. It couldn't be clearer than a whole, than a street. And symmetry and balance, of course, is important in all, in all communities, that, you know, we know where the business ends, and we know where the residents live. It's a transition district, and as it escalates into Main Street, as you get closer to Main Street, you get a little bit more of both mixed, and then you go to probably one-hundred percent commercial property. Also, the reasons that were stated in the January 23 decision, which all our board members have had a chance to review in the past couple years, and it doesn't seem that much has changed. Am I correct in saying that not much has changed with the application over two years ago, and, you know, which was originally denied? The property is basically surrounded by residential properties across the street, to the east, to the north, and to the west. The change of zone is fought to permit a kind of thing, so, you know, if you have Miss Montana there, and she keeps up a good business, and then all of a sudden you get another business coming, you don't know what can change over a period of time. It's basically unlimited kind of businesses, of course, you can have a deli or a pizzeria, but there are other kind of businesses that are not suitable for residential areas that could possibly be there. And we disagree with the applicant. The downtown business district study in November 2002 does not support the approach of business into A residential. And that's one of the things here in the village that we really try to do, is keep the residents residential and keep the business business. This is a single parcel. Correct. Which is the essence of spot zoning. So this would basically be a spot zoning situation if we did that. And for myself, I think that would open the floodgates to more. And for those reasons, for foregoing reasons, for the reasons that are on the record here and contained in the January 2012 decision, I move for denial of change of zone.